Welcome, everyone, to the Durango City Council Regular Meeting of November 16th, 2021. It's 5:34, and we'll start our meeting. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Bosmans? Counselor Buell?
Here.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Present.
Mayor Baxter?
Present, thank you. May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
The translators aren't online yet, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And are there any perceived or actual conflicts of interest among the city councilors on tonight's agenda? No? Wonderful. Saying none of—oh, Melissa, I'm sorry, I forgot to look at you. No? Okay, great, thank you. Now, we'll go into public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. As this is a virtual meeting—the aven—thank you—the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the City Cork by noon today have been delivered to Council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. We ask all speakers to please be civil and respectful of others. Did everyone get a chance to sign up for a public comment who wanted to? Yeah. And then there's also comments for the two hearings. If you want to make a comment on the hearings over there, too, you can sign up for that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ellie Clark, Durango High School Student Body President. Please say your name, and if you're a city resident. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellie Clark, and I'm the Student Body Co-President at Durango High School. Here are some fall updates. The DHS football team is playing in the quarterfinals this weekend. All other fall sports have finished at DHS. Both boys' and girls' cross-country teams qualified for state. The girls' team won Regionals and placed third at state. Lance Lambert was named First Team All-State, and Damian Frosto, Abby Fair, Angela McManus, and Sophia Voss earned honorable mentions at state. Girls' softball finished their season with the best record they have had in over 15 years. Girls' volleyball qualified for Regionals and missed qualifying for state after a tiebreaker. Theater Troop 1096 just closed out their three-week run of Addams Family. Next up is the Underclassmen Gala and Radium Girls. The Native American Club is hosting a presentation series throughout November for Native American Heritage Month. The presentations are held on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM in the DHS cafeteria. Native American Club events are posted on the DHS Native American Club website calendar with the implication that admin, teachers, staff, and district personnel are always invited. Students in Native American Club have the chance to earn community service hours when they attend Native American Parent Advisory Committee events and meetings. All Native American Club events are open to Native students and families of all 9R schools. The DHS Interact Club, associated with Rotary International and DHS Student Council, are teaming up to raise money to help buy furniture for the Aspharo Apartments through our Penny Wars. Penny Wars is a class competition. Our Interact Club also hosted a food drive with proceeds going to local pantries. Last week, we hosted our annual Veterans Day Assembly, in which we honored the service and sacrifice of our local veterans. Veterans were treated to a breakfast cooked by our culinary program, and then we had a celebration featuring DHS students and staff where we individually honored the veterans in attendance. The highlight was definitely the standing ovation that 94-year-young Bill Morgan, a World War II veteran, received from our student body. Our DECA Business Skill Club recently had their regional competition, and we are happy that 13 demons qualified for the state-level competition. Lastly, DHS Student Council would like to invite you to our annual Council of Excellence presentation. Our council is a 10-time National Association of Student Council's Gold Council of Excellence, and we're looking forward to attempting to earn our 11th title. The date for that presentation is January 20, and we'll be sending you more information out soon.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Greg Holt, please. It's gonna be a tough one to follow, Greg.
It's not my hearing aids, it's my glasses. Good evening, Council. I'd like to begin with an opening apology if I've seemed disrespectful to you in the past appearances I've made here. I want you to know that I respect elected officials greatly because there are very few people in this world who are willing to go through a thankless job like you have with so few rewards for public service. So I thank you for that. I think I've basically been the way I've been because of my frustration. And one frustration I have is that is learning that this entire issue with the fire department in the 9R may go all the way to approval without the City Council having not one meeting where the public can comment unless the Planning Commission does not approve the site-specific development plan. Surely, you can understand your citizens' frustration about this reality. In the past five days, I appreciated being able to speak individually with the mayor and the Mayor Protem because that is clearly the only arena we have to talk to the Durango City Council individually. So I'm alerting the other three councilors to anticipate that we citizens will request a meeting with you individually in the near future. I hope, as the mayor and the Mayor Protem can attest, we don't bite, malign, or harass to the best of our abilities. So I continue to urge you to hold a public forum soon to address this question: Where is the best location for a fire station in downtown Durango? Without any such forum, it appears that the city of Durango will witness the sighting of a major land use within its downtown without any input from its citizens or its City Council or its elected officials. So there is something clearly tragically wrong with that scenario. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Less than two minutes.
Good job. Lars Hansen, please.
Lars Hansen, 1323 East Second Avenue. I live right across the street from the proposed site for the new fire station. And last week, I brought up an example of Holly Dotson, who lives behind the proposed site, who is gonna literally have a fire station in her backyard with bells and whistles and sirens and whatever else is going on. And I encourage you to step forward to say—if you really approve of this, if you think this is a good idea—to step forward and say, "Sorry, Holly, that's too bad." And I'm gonna give you another 10 seconds to do so. No takers. Okay. So I have had—so far, I've had 12 minutes, four times three minutes to defend my property, my purchase of my property, my real estate, my investment, where my kids sleep, where we have built a home. And I feel like I'm not being heard. You certainly know who I am by now, and I have encouraged you to reach out to me. We're many residents who live in the surrounding area who don't feel heard, and we're surprised that there has been no public forum where we can voice our opinions, and we actually get a chance to get an answer back. We're encouraged to meet one-on-one with councilors. Well, maybe that's not comfortable for some people. Maybe it's more realistic to have a forum where you guys can be held accountable for what you say and promise, and don't say and don't promise, I guess. I'm a daily witness to the traffic and parking impact there, and I was thinking about it this morning. So what if they do a traffic study in the wintertime? Well, then, maybe it'll pass. Maybe. But summertime, there can be no doubt about the pressure that this particular area has. It's hard to find parking, it's hard to get around, there's a bunch of tourists milling up and down the street all the time, turning around, hitting a bland spot in by Charles. And we want a forum! Come and meet us! Call me! Do something! We don't feel heard! And we—I made sure that my friends, my circle of people—which is fairly big—all voted for a number of you guys. I would say 80% of the current councilors. I have something for you guys to contemplate. I looked up—the DFPD's board consists solely of people who live out of the city. As far as I know, none of them live in the city. I think this is peculiar. No?
It's true.
Okay. So I invite you, as our leaders, to think about this. And that's where we're trying to lean on you. You live in the city. Help us out with city living. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. You know, if you want to put your phone number down, I'll call you. You gotta put your phone number down, though. If I don't have a phone number, I can't call you.
My name is Werner Heibel, and I live at 131 Lockspur Street in Durango. And I'm also really glad—I don't believe I have to apologize to you like Greg had to do beforehand about the statements I have made in the past. I spoke to you two weeks ago about the urgency of implementing the 2019 greenhouse gas and renewable energy commitments. Not knowing whether in the meantime you have done so or where you are in that process, I'm here again speaking on the same issue. But it does require staff time and funding. Implementing these goals with a timetable of metrics will reduce the amount of electricity the city purchases from LPA as a return of investment of as short as eight years. It's rather unique. Actually, it's been money, and you're gonna say money. If the initial funding is an issue, what better use is there of applying the approximately $1 million franchise agreement tax for this purpose? So it's actually money taxed that you collect whose attention was initially to be used for this purpose. Next, I'd like to talk to Jose about an opportunity. You will be speaking next month at the Green Business Roundtable. And that's a pretty environmentally astute audience. Many—I believe many—have signed the petition which led to 2019 agreement. So what a great opportunity it is to actually let you know that the City Council is taking this issue and the past commitment seriously. Finally, we all know the phrase, "Think globally, act locally." Well, the world just met in Glasgow addressing climate change. Let our city become one of many by locally implementing its 2019 goals. Young people depend on your support and your commitment. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Werner. Jen Lopez.
It was a mistake, sorry.
Emily Bell.
My name is Emily Bell, and I'm the Managing Director of Local First, located on 160 East 12th Street. And as a co-signer of the Durango Energy Futures Letter submitted to Council, I'm here today to amplify the request for City Council to prioritize the greenhouse gas and renewable electricity goals adopted in 2019 and to allocate sufficient funds in the 2022 budget to meet our commitments. To provide some context, over three years ago now, in August of 2019, Local First helped get two renewable energy goals formally adopted by Durango City Council: 80% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions from 2016 levels by 2050 with an interim goal of 30% by 2030, and 100% renewable electricity by 2050 with an interim goal of 50% renewable electricity by 2030. At the time, the momentum was endorsed by over 120 businesses and 1,500 individual community members to help get the aforementioned goals formally adopted by Council. Since then, city staff has developed an extensive sustainability action plan that now encompasses 19 goals. Local First really appreciates all of the time and resources that the city has put into this, you know, and really developing this broader holistic plan that understands the complexity of implementing a really robust guiding document whose implications seemingly permeate every department. Our request today, however, is that we do not lose sight of the two initial goals that inspired this plan to begin with. We ask the city to identify which specific budgeted funds will be allocated to contribute to each aspect of the 2019 greenhouse gas and renewable electricity resolution, along with an outline of tangible actions for implementation. It's necessary for the city to identify the expected greenhouse gas reductions from each sustainability action in the plan and yearly budget, along with providing a tracking mechanism to ensure over time that the reduction is being met and to track progress and accountability. Without hard deadlines and strict intermediate targets that provide accountability, it will become increasingly difficult to meet our goals by 2050, let alone our interim goals by 2030. On behalf of Local First and the independent business community, I really urge you to re-center these goals in your 2022 budgetary process and position Durango as a leader in greenhouse gas reduction and renewable electricity. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Emily. Johan Rahan, is that how you say your last name? I'm sorry. Yep?
That's impressive, actually. My name's Johan Rahan. I live at 40 La Plata Place. I'm the owner of Durango Cyclory, which is on 143 East 13th Street, across the street from Buckley Park, and will be really impacted by the movement of the fire station to the 9R building and that lot. I am also a familiar face to you all by this point, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment here. Just echoing what Greg had to say, I think the frustration that we're all feeling is building, and it's building in the community. And I talk to people at the bike shop about this every single day, and I talk to the friends that I see around town about this every single day. And people are chattering about it, and it's gonna be on your radar, and it's gonna come up again, you know, probably when it's time to reelect all you guys. So all that said, we haven't seen a site plan yet, and that just leaves us with some questions that—you know, these are just a few of the questions that are on my mind and some of the questions some of the people I have talked to have, and I'm just gonna leave these with you to ponder while you fall asleep this evening. Do we know if the bays required to expand the fire department are even gonna fit in this lot in between the 9R building and the alleyway? Have you looked—I ride across the bike path down by the existing fire station right now, and the four bays that they have in there—which is not enough—apparently are—it's quite wide as it stands right now, and I honestly don't think that can fit in that section of land in that property right there between the 9R building and the alley right of way behind the funeral home and Holly's house. So that leaves me with the question: Do we know what the exact preservation status of the 9R building is? Is that building there to be preserved? Is it just a facade preservation? Is it temporary? Is it permanent? What's gonna happen to that building? What's the community gonna say if anything is done to that building to make sure there's enough space for the garage? Is a drive-through garage—which is the whole goal of this project—actually the best solution? Again, I know you're not the fire district, and this isn't your decision, but you are gonna have some weight to throw around at some point in this process, hopefully when it's not too late. Drive-through garages are incredibly energy inefficient. You're doubling the amount of pavement on both sides of the garage because the trucks gotta go in on one side and out on the other. There's not some magical reductions. You're actually doubling the amount of pavement that's gonna be there. There is now two walls instead of one wall, really long longitudinal walls. We're trying to get them a better station that functions better and has more storage space and places for the firefighters, and you're actually reducing that amount of space. Also, what has—what's 12th Street gonna look like when this is all done? I urge you to go stand in front of the big picture building on 12th Street, look at those trees, look at where the trucks are gonna have to turn, and ask yourself, like, what is this nice green tree-shaded lawn going to look like as a driveway? And what's that gonna do to the community? So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Joe. All right, on to review of the consent agenda.
Anybody on—sorry? Anybody from Zoom?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Are there any—I forget sometimes. Are there any digital joiners for us this evening for public comment?
Yes, I see one person with their hand raised. Cheryl Locke, hold on.
Hello, Cheryl. If you'd give us your name and if you're a city resident, please.
Yes, hi. My name is Cheryl Locke, and I am a city resident, 1323 East Second Avenue. And I just want to reiterate what Joe just said. Basically, I'm gonna keep it short and brief. We are very concerned about traffic pattern, about the impact of the fire station being in this neighborhood, and there's a lot of personal reasons that can surround this for the fact that I live here. But beyond the fact that I live here, I think it has such a huge impact to our downtown and to the city of Durango and how this neighborhood—it's—we've been trying to expand—we're expanding North Main and all the great things that are happening and just making our town more livable, cozy, all of those things. And I just want to remind you that it's not only about the residents that live here, it really is about the feel of the city and the whole impact that it will have having a fire station downtown between Main and Second and Third Avenue. Like, the impact is gonna be enormous, and I don't think that's what really anybody wants that lives in the city. And I don't think that anybody will like it if it goes through, including you, probably. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cheryl. Do we have any other virtual speakers?
That's the last one.
Thank you very much. On to the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item—thank you—requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Items 7.1 through 7.4 are approval of minutes. 7.1, the minutes from the November 2 special meeting. 7.2, the minutes from the November study session—November 2 study session. 7.3, the minutes from the October 21 joint study session. And 7.4, the minutes from the October 12 joint study session. Items 7.5 and 7.6 are discussion and possible action items. 7.5 concerns Twin Buttes Lot 46 Final As-Built Platte. 7.6 concerns Resolution R 2021-64, amending certain sections of Resolution R 2012-26 for purposes of enhancing duties and responsibilities, increasing a council liaison position to the Community Relations Commission for the city of Durango. Item 7.7 is final approval of ordinance O 2021-23, amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango, the Land Use and Development Code, by the amendment of Chapter 2, 4, and 7 related to motor vehicles and heavy equipment in the Central Business District, electric vehicle regulations and definitions, and declaring an effective date. And 7.8, final approval of ordinance O 2021-24, defining and approving the city of Durango departmental structure for 2022, confirming department head appointments, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phillips. Are there any consent agenda items that councilors would like to remove?
No.
No? All righty, thank you. Then may I have a motion, please?
I'll move to accept—to vote on the consent agenda items as listed.
To approve?
To approve, yeah.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote call, please, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And we're on to Administrative, 10.1, discussion and possible action regarding approval of a resolution adopting revised personnel regulations for the city of Durango.
Mayor and Council, we have Erin Heider, our Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services, to provide that presentation. Also, just as a note for the public who may be attending, and why administrative is before public hearings, just to let you all know, we moved our meetings to start time at 5:30. We did so with a practice that we wouldn't do the public hearings until at least 6:30 or 7:00 to give people the ability to get home and have time to comment. So it's not anything other than just trying to fit other items on our agenda done as we continue to make sure that we can have the public—have the opportunity to have public hearings on some pretty important items tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Erin Heider, Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services. And tonight, we are presenting an update in Employee Handbook for Adoption by Council effective December 26, 2021, which is effectively January of 2022. Although the city manager is ultimately responsible for the personnel policies, the city charter does require approval via resolution by City Council. And so I wanted to take some time and provide a brief summary of the process and the high level changes that are in the handbook and answer any questions as we go through. Updating the Personnel Regulations or the Employee Handbook has been a key priority for 2021, and staff has been working for several months revising and updating the Personnel regs, which was last updated holistically in July 2016. The presented version has been collaboratively discussed with numerous partners, including Employers Council, which includes a legal review, city manager Madrigal, city attorney, and the executive leadership team. In addition to capturing the required legal changes since 2016, one of the primary goals was to simplify the content and move away from the Employee Handbook really becoming a catch-all, where we're—in moving by moving specific details and programs that are not necessarily policy-related into out of the handbook and into more an easy-to-access central location. And this aligns with best practices with Employee Handbook practices. I'd also like to highlight the connection between the Employee Handbook and identifying the strategic goal areas that are adopted within the strategic plan. We've included those within the handbook. And you will see a change to the title from Personnel Regulations to Employee Handbook moving forward. One of the things that we have spent significant time discussing internally related and part of our customer service strategy conversations is really looking at what we're doing right now and really asking ourselves to our users, our customers, how does this feel? How does this look? Does it feel modern and relevant? And, you know, part of reflecting this name change really addresses the need to make sure that it still appears to be relevant and modern with the tools that we're using internally. To highlight some other key changes, I wanted to pull out just a short list of items that did receive review and change, including the updated and/or streamlined complaint procedure, updated the nepotism— the complaint procedure, updated the nepotism definition and policy reflecting family in the ethics code or the code of ethics, eliminating the probationary period, eliminating our performance review section as we transition to annual professional development goals or, um, I like, uh, personal strategy plans with our team, and redefining the disciplinary process. All of these changes, um, are intended to improve clarity, mitigate confusion in key areas, uh, while also enhancing and streamlining the process that benefit both the employee and us as an employer. Uh, one item to point out in your packet, um, the version provided in your packet, I did notice that Section 2.10.3 is just missing the title. I just want to highlight that for you all. That is, uh, layoff and it was missing in the packet, has been corrected since then. Um, wanted to bring that up. Moving forward, uh, we intend to review the employee handbook on an annual basis with similar intent in review, um, to make sure that it is always relevant and that it really becomes a tool that is useful for both our employees and us as leaders within the organization. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the proposed, um, handbook before.
Any questions or discussions?
No, thank you, Erin. It was, it was a huge effort and I appreciate the updating of it.
Thank you. The team did a great job.
Thanks, Erin.
Great. Melissa, did you have any questions? Nope. Do we need a resolution number?
Yes, this will be 2021-65. It'd be R 20.
R 2021-65.
65, uh.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I'll move to approve the attach, or Resolution R 2021-65, adopting the revised and restated employee handbook for the City of Durango.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. On to 10.2, discussion and possible action regarding an intergovernmental agreement with La Plata County and Durango Fire Protection District to create a Wildlife and Watershed Protection Fund. Who's, uh, leading this conversation?
Uh, I'll take it initially and then I think maybe, uh, you know, Jose has a couple of items too. Uh, first of all, I didn't notice until I read, uh, this tonight that there's actually a typo there that should be Wildfire instead of Wildlife Protection Fund. While it will indeed, uh, indeed, I'm sure, protect wildlife, uh, the primary focus of this is wildfire and watershed protection. This has been an effort that's been ongoing for quite some time, uh, between the county, the DFPD, and the city to create, uh, this fund. The county has agreed to, um, host, if you will, this fund and they have undertaken to, uh, pursue it to the agreement, hire a coordinator, uh, and provide some other, um, support, grant support, and also to provide a general support to this, uh, fund via, um, the city's, uh, excuse me, the county's personnel structure. I, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but is it, just to point out, uh, and Jose reminded me that this does, uh, call for a city financial participation primarily initially to pay for the coordinator I just mentioned. Uh, and this also, once created, provides for city council to appoint two board members. Uh, so, that is an action that will need to be followed either tonight or, uh, council can discuss, you know, a process, um, to appoint two board members for this entity. Happy to answer questions if you have any?
Any questions, councilors? And I want to say thank you very much to Councilor Youssef and Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy for working so hard on this group. You've spent months and I'm untold hours, I'm sure, working on it and you've done a great job. Thank you.
There will.
Thank you.
Sorry. There will be an appropriation that'll be at the next council meeting, uh, for our share of this funding. So, once this is approved, uh, it'll be approved, obviously, tonight. And then the next council meeting will do the appropriation for the funding that, uh, we are obligated for on this portion.
And, uh, once approved, the job description is set to go and we are eager to have a person hired and in place, so.
Councilor Youssef, did you want to add anything to the conversation?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just, uh, want to reiterate my full support and, and thanks to staff for working so hard on this as well. Thank you, Dirk. I know it's been a lot of collaboration, um, with, um, the other attorneys, uh, to get to this point. And I just think this is a huge benefit for our community that we will all, uh, gain so much larger support with this, uh, region-wide collaboration. Um, and I look forward to, uh, continuing to support it and also expressing my support for continued long-term funding for this, you know, over, over, over a longer period of time, just to want to reiterate, um, my full support and thanks to staff as well.
Wonderful. I did have one question on page five. Um, Section 2I, under Durango Fire District, um, they're talking about funds and, uh, types of charges and they're calling it a hard dollar cost to DFPD. And then down under, uh, Section, oh, number four down below, it says the same thing again, any other costs or needs that represent a hard cost to DFPD. And in the definitions section of, uh, in this document, there was not a definition of what hard dollar cost means. And I realize that what they're, what we're probably looking at here is their, their don't, their, uh, in kind is the use of their equipment and things like that and, um, charges that they would charge would be like labor costs and fuel, things that they have to directly pay for. But I'm wondering if we don't need at some point to have an actual definition of what that means.
Yeah, this was actually one of the things, uh, you know, it kept reporting that we were waiting on, uh, some final information from DFPD on their proposed, uh, contribution in kind. And this language came, uh, from DFPD. Uh, and I, I, I'm certain when this is operating as, as the case with most of these, uh, new entities, we will, uh, need to fine-tune that. So, I, I, I think your understanding that you described is what I understand as well. Uh, but you're correct, there is no specific definition of that and we can certainly work on that. I, I mean, my, my assumption is that once the coordinator is hired and, uh, we can move forward in a little more detail, uh, that we probably will indeed find some things that need to be cleaned up as we go.
Would it be possible to approve this, um, allowing for a definition of hard cost to be added to it? Just, just so that, even though I realize that might change, the definition might change over time with things, but it's always nice to know what you think you're signing up for.
Sure, I can convey that.
Is that okay with council? With a definition added?
Yeah.
Yeah? How about you, Melissa? Is that okay? All right. Any other conversation or discussion? Um, do we have a motion? And do we have a, is it a resolution or an ordinance?
No, this is just, uh, intended to be approved by motion.
Okay. Then we just need a motion.
I don't have it up in front of me. I got it. Um, I just didn't know if you want to do it because you guys have worked so hard on it.
I was looking, I was looking at Melissa if she wanted to make the motion.
Um, I move to approve the attached intergovernmental agreement regarding creation of the Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund with the addition of the hard cost definition.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just add to, Melissa also talked about the support and I just want to say that it was a real, a large effort of so many people and a great example of the city, county, and the fire district working together. And I also want to call out the work of the folks that worked on the Southwest Fire Impact Fund, the original thinking behind this. Because I think we took, uh, what they built on and made it fit for us in our community. And I just, but I do want to acknowledge their work as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor. Mayor Pro Tim. Also, I want to just also think and, and point out to council, um, that this is a process that I think worked well, uh, for our council team. We had a lot of questions initially. Um, there was a lot of concern and the way we, I believe that the way we handled it as a team, setting up a subgroup, um, was very effective, allowing us the time to sort through the questions and work with the various parties. Um, so, I just wanted to also thank council.
Wonderful. Anything else? All righty then, vote, please.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. On to 10.3, Best Western Durango Inn and Suites Real Estate Contract Update. Who do we have leading this?
We do. Nicole Killian, our Assistant Director of Community Development, uh, will be leading this item for staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Nicole Killian, Assistant Director of Community Development. And I do have with me, um, Project Moxie, our consultants, so Jen Lopez and Cynthia Robach, um, as well. And I'm not gonna go through the whole agenda documentation. I, um, I kinda gave you an outline of where things are in the process and the timeline of where we've come and where we're at right now. Um, but may I, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen and just have her kinda walk through some slides, um, to give you some specific information about due diligence process, um, where the contract's going from here. Um, and then we do, at the end, um, we are requesting that we, um, get approval from city council to extend the contract. Um, we've negotiated that with the property owners, um, to be able to finish due diligence process. Um, and so, I'll have Jen wrap that up and then I will come back to you with the, the motion that, um, is before you tonight. Let's see. And, is this sharing screen, Amy, already? It was. Do you know? Oh, let me do it this way. Okay, here we go. All right, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Great to be with you tonight. Uh, this will be a, a pretty high-level update, but it's been almost three months. Where's the time going? So, we wanted to let you know on the progress that's been made and sort of the direction this project is taking and why. So, you all know I speak quickly and it seems to work, but if I'm going too fast, just slow me down. And maybe for, I guess, being on Zoom, my name is Jen Lopez. I have a consulting business called Project Moxie. I've been doing affordable housing for 20 years and I'm a local, so it's great to work on this project. This presentation will, uh, review the original scope when we came to you in August and asked for permission to move forward. We'll talk about, uh, where we're at with feasibility, what the model is, we think, today, and our next steps. Back in August, we came to you and we, uh, it, actually, I keep giving the credit to Kevin Hall back at the end of last year, uh, when he asked about motel conversions and we started talking. Steph brought me on in July. Uh, we were able to connect with the Best Western broker and the owner and there was definitely interest in, um, seeing if there was a way to work, work together to create something for the community. Uh, the contract, uh, was for 7 million. We had a 90-day, uh, due diligence period and that's why we're here in front of you tonight. We need a little more time. It's going really well. Um, but we'd like that permission. Uh, let's see. Uh, the, the biggest thing, when we came, came to you in August was we, we pitched, this is an incredible opportunity to step in, grab some ARPA funds, address affordable housing, and we will mitigate the risk to the city. The way that we do that is we find a development partner to come in and take over at a certain point when the project looks feasible. And that's how we mitigate, developers do what they do best and, uh, we'll talk about how we found the development partner. Again, the request tonight, approval of a no-risk contract extension, no material changes to contract. We need more time for some of our third-party reports. Seller is amenable. Uh, this would take us out to February 22nd for our due diligence period. Am I doing okay? Is this a good pace? This is a chai with two shots of espresso. So, uh, again, always the goal when we are working public-private partnerships is identifying the highest and best use for site, specifically to create some kind of housing solution. We wanted to identify a third-party developer to assume the contract and assist with feasibility and takeover redevelopment. We wanted to confirm in the last, uh, three months what population could be served based on capacity of the developer and our community, resources available, et cetera. And we wanted to minimize the funds needed from the city to complete the project. Uh, it, you, you all know, it's been a year. Um, very exciting, lots of funds from the state legislature, but very specifically a set aside for motel conversions. Um, staff also made a request to our, our congressional delegation. Thank you, Nicole, for leading that. Looks like we are queued up for potential $3 million, um, of funding for this project next month, we'll know for sure. Thank you to Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper and their teams. And then DOH in August, right about the time we were, uh, bringing this in front of you, uh, announced 50 million for acquisition of property specifically around, um, mitigating ARPA and taking advantage and repositioning real estate at, at the community level. And, uh, I had been working in other communities on this, so it was just a great time to look at this. When we do feasibility on, on any kind of affordable housing, housing, workforce housing, homeless project, we look at three main things. We look at capacity. Capacity means what, uh, what can we do and what can the developer do that steps into the space with us? Um, and the way that we define that is we run a request for qualifications. I'll walk through that real quick. Operational is really tricky. If it's affordable housing, it's a property management and it's rent subsidy. Um, if it's not, it's much more challenging, the funding's much harder to find. You all know the blessing and curse of these ARPA funds is they're one and done, right? And so, they're very good for getting us caught up or acquiring, but they're not gonna help us sustain. And so, that was a big lens we used for this project is how do we create something that, you know, is gonna sustain over time? And then financial feasibility is that intersection of, uh, where we can leverage funding, where there's need in the community. So, I am not gonna go over this, but I just wanted to show you the level of due diligence we are working on. I'm happy to send this out, but, but it really is, um, it's a process and we feel pretty good about where we've landed.
Jen?
Yes.
Would you share this with council by email after?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. So, highest and best use, uh, so given the available funding, the need in the community, the capacity the developer partner selected, the team is moving forward today. And again, this can change during due diligence, but today it looks like we could get a 4% tax credit, um, funded affordable housing project. Um, the idea is to convert the existing motel units into studios and then to add additional units to get to 120 units of affordable housing. This would be one of the, the biggest project in the community to date using tax credits. Um, the cost to the city, uh, only existing expenses covered to date for consultants and third-party, 75,000, 80,000. Team would apply in 2022 for all funds. If successful, units would come online in '24. Uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this model. Right now, sorry, I should, little, uh, the third-party studies that we need a little more time on and the ones that are in, we have a Phase 1 that was just received last week, uh, no red flags. We're waiting on the construction needs assessment. Uh, the building looks to be in really good shape. Uh, the, the primary motel building, the restaurant will not, uh, will probably scrape and put units there. We're getting the survey in December, preliminary market study in January, appraisal in January, geotech report. So, you can see why we need a little bit more time. Developer selection. Uh, this was interesting because after we went through this process, we did receive some emails and questions and interest and, um, but we ran through, we created a process, I think it was early September, late August, we created a request for qualifications. We put it up on BidNet. Uh, we know it's a really, really busy time for developers, especially housing and especially workforce affordable developers. And so, we also took the time and sent it out to a larger network of developers. We had one firm respond. Uh, they had a strong response and a great track record. The team interviewed them. We selected them in mid-September. Their name is TWG. I'm gonna go over this very quickly. City manager, thank you for meeting with them while they were here. Appreciate it. It's always helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, lots of stuff here, but basically, they're in 14 states. They've done over 8,500 units of housing. They do everything in this field. We call it a full-service, right? Developers, so they'll develop, finance, design, construction, manage. I want to focus primarily on what they do in Colorado. So, they've been in Colorado a few years. They did a large project in Aurora recently where they were up for an award for that project. And then they recently completed a project in Rifle. So, we're really excited to have them on the team. It's been a huge benefit to our due diligence process. A little bit about the financial feasibility and how we decided on tax credits in this model. So, TWG came out in September and walked the site, met with staff. Thank you, Dirk, again. Staff, great. Um, and they were really excited when they left. They hadn't been to Durango before. They were like, oh, my gosh, what an incredible community, this property. Uh, the site is solid. Um, units are, again, are in better condition than they expected and the, the potential for the land behind allows for more units to be built in that area. About, uh, the time of their site visit, they created their first pro forma to figure it out. So, this is a $30 million deal. Uh, if it moves forward as is, and again, it will probably change here and there slightly over the next few months, but in general, this is a, a concept we can get comfortable with. Uh, 30 million for 120 units of act, and it's, it covers all costs, acquisition, rehab, and new construction. 17 million would be in tax credit equity, 7.9 million in long-term debt. in long-term debt, $2 million in state funds, $3 million in the congressional appropriation. So I feel, the team's talked about this a lot. It feels like this was the right project at the right time. A lot of things have come together for this project. Little bit about the unit mixes and ranges. We're still working on this, but first blush, we would have studios with rents from $400 to $869 a month, one bedrooms from $432 to $926 a month, two bedrooms from $511 to $1104 a month. This is a really interesting chart. On need, just look at the red. So new worker households and sort of the pent-up demand, that $232 number is the number of units we need for renters earning under 60% of area median income. This project will get you more than halfway there. So I just wanted to kind of point out how it fits within the context of other projects and needs in the community. Incomes, these are the max incomes that could be served at the property. So one person, $36,000, $242, $347. So just to give you a range, I suspect we'll be able to serve people at much lower incomes because we have project-based vouchers in the community that we cannot place. So I expect this will be a mixed community. Next steps, we'll finish those feasibility reports. We'll hear about the congressional appropriation. We actually also put in, I was super, I was just so excited to be part of this project in my own community. We were able to take advantage of the $50 million program for acquisition. We submitted for a $7 million acquisition loan, less than 1% for this project. We'll hear about that in the next month. So that's on here. Again, finish the due diligence. Everything lines up. We'll be able to transfer the contract to TWG before the due diligence period ends. And then we'll start moving forward, assisting TWG with packaging, the financing. One of those pieces will be back in front of you if this moves forward, asking for help with your private activity bond allocation, and then beginning zoning and entitlement. That was fast. I hope that was good enough. Here, can take any questions, and Nicole's also ready to go, and Cynthia?
Nicole, do you want to say something before Council asks questions?
Yeah, again, we do need to get City Council approval to approve the extension of the due diligence process and closing date for the real estate purchase of the Best Western Durango Inn and Suites, and direct the City Manager to sign an amendment to the purchase agreement and other documents needed to amend the contract agreement.
Do you have that, or do we have that? Okay. So is there, are there any questions or comments or discussion by Council?
Fantastic job. Fantastic. And when I was at the Aspero, I heard such good things about this firm, the developer that you've hired. And let me just see if I've got my math right. $75,000 in consulting costs, a no-risk contract, and potential for $30 million investment in the community and 120 units. That's leverage I love to see. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us a chance.
Yeah, I agree. It's super exciting. You know, 120 units between $400 and $1,000 a month, serving a population we really need to, so I'm excited. Thank you so much.
Councilor Youssef, do you have a comment or question?
Well, thank you. I just think we're so lucky, Jen, to have you in our community with your expertise. Thank you very much. And I think clearly we all know this serves it, this has to serve a huge need for us. So I look forward to hearing from you. When do you think we might get another update? Will you be back on our agenda, perhaps in December after you hear from the DOH?
We hope we would have some good news with the congressional funding first. That should be coming up in early December, and that's the $3 million. So once we get word of that, we will make sure we share that. And then DOH would be next. And then we will, again, be back in front of you to do the transfer of the contract to TWG before that, February 22 due diligence deadline.
And Nicole, thank you so much for staff and City, Durango staff, for the hard work and doing all the research and getting this teed up and ready to go. And it's just, it's an exciting opportunity. So thank you, guys, all of you.
Congratulations. I look forward to watching this happen. I'm just a little unclear on what AMI group this will actually be serving.
It'd be 0 to 60%.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is a great addition, I believe, to our housing needs here, and so we have a lot more to do. We need to keep moving forward. Jen was present last night at Fort Lewis College with a student housing conversation that was very interesting, and I believe that they'll be happy to hear about this also. Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the extension of the due diligence process and closing date of the real estate purchase of the Best Western Durango Inn and Suites, and direct the City Manager to sign an amendment to the purchase agreement and other documents needed to amend the contract agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please, Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you again, everybody. Good job. 10.4, Discussion and Possible Action Concerning Approval of a Revised and Restated IGA Regarding the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County.
Good evening, Mayor Baxter, Council. Kevin Hall, Managing Director, Community Development. This agenda item, it really fits well after what we just talked about. In fact, exceptional partnership, private-public partnership that Nicole and Jen just spoke to, and also utilization of state and federal resources to get there. This agenda item is a little bit of a broader discussion regarding housing in the community and the broader community of La Plata County. As you know, we had a regional housing authority in place for over a decade, and in 2016, 2017, there was a decision at that time to decommission the primary focus of the authority, move some of the primary activities of what was then and is now called the Regional Housing Alliance, La Plata County, to Homes Fund, and they've been managing a mortgage assistance program and our fair share program since that time. The alliance didn't go away in 2017, but it was essentially mothballed, and we had annual meetings for a couple of years. We had a couple of meetings a year where the Board of Directors stayed in place, a reduced Board of Directors that essentially dealt with existing resources held by the alliance. So there was some, some deed-restricted units that were tied to the alliance. There were some cash funds that were still tied to the alliance. And so essentially, the four participants in the alliance, which is essentially Durango, La Plata County, Bayfield, and Ignacio, kept the organization on life support. In 16 and 17, there was a discussion about, well, let's keep it on life support, and let's revisit it in a few years to see whether there's a need for this type of organization. And in fact, here we are, you know, five, six years later from when the conversation first started, and the discussion has been really focused on reconstituting a fully functional housing alliance to really meet the needs of the larger community, including Durango. As you know, the work that the city has been doing, largely been doing with city staff and the assistance of consultants and others. In this case, we'd have an opportunity to work with La Plata County and the other partners to really maximize opportunities on a broader scale. The item before you is essentially a restated intergovernmental agreement that reconstitute a fully functional RHA. We've provided in the agenda packet essentially what was approved by the RHA Board, what was approved by La Plata County approximately a week ago. And both Bayfield and Ignacio are also planning to move this forward with their elected officials for ratification. So without getting into a great deal of additional detail as to what's in there, we provided you that, the proposed restated IGA. The one call-out I might suggest is that for the last year and a half, there's been a lot of conversation at the Board. Mayor Baxter currently serves as President of the Board. We had a retreat earlier this year, a lot of conversation about the value of the RHA, the purpose of the RHA, and what it might look like moving forward. There is a cost associated with reconstituting the RHA for each of the organizations. At this point in time, that conversation really hasn't occurred. I think what, and we outlined it in the agenda doc, is that there would be for the coming three years, anticipated that each other partner entities would fund a proportionate share of the organization's operating costs. Again, that discussion will occur probably in January will begin. This IGA does not commit or bind this council to a particular cost associated with rejoining a more robust organization. There'll be a separate funding agreement that would have to come before this council to decide whether you're supportive of what is ultimately decided by the Board. Seems to be a good breakdown in terms of the costs. I think long-term, the idea would be that the RHA would find its way to self-funding so that the city wouldn't have to necessarily on an annual basis refund the organization, but there'd be a larger funding stream to do so. I think what I'll do right there, and we can come back to the recommendation, but maybe I'll pass it to Mayor Baxter, who may have some thoughts on this. If you wanted to share those, I certainly would give you that opportunity.
I love surprises. Thank you, Kevin. No, what Kevin says is true. We've been having really robust discussions about this, and I actually believe we are the last member of the RHA to approve it. I think everyone else has already done that. So, and it's only a matter of timing in our meetings that has caused it to be this way. So a couple of things I want to say is that Commissioner Porter Norton has mentioned that really the focus for the county on housing is the RHA. So they are committed to this. This is how they see making a difference in the county. And so I think that having, being a part of this is really beneficial. And as Kevin mentioned, the alliance has funding right now to go out and do a request for qualifications for a leadership position, whether that be a person or a firm for the RHA. That RFQ is complete, and I believe it went out on the 11th?
Correct.
Yes. So, and we're hoping by the end of December or early January to have, be able to interview and have someone hired because there's funding in the RHA currently to do that. And also, that brings up the funding mechanism for the future, which, as Kevin mentioned, there's no commitment in this contract for any of the municipalities. We'll figure that out as we go. Once we get the leader on board to help us figure out what the programs look like and what we can do first and what we're going to need to do those things. So if you have any questions, Kevin and I'd be happy to answer.
I read a little bit in the documents, in the agenda, the purpose and structure of the RHA has changed quite a bit. Where do you see, or, sorry to put you on the spot, like, what is the purpose and structure of it now, do you think?
So the purpose, the purpose of it is to get units on the ground, number one. That was the biggest conversation that we had, was if we weren't all committed to that, then there was no reason to do this. And the other focus is housing from 0 to 120 AMI range, but mostly focused on workforce. As you see, we have many projects, Aspero and Best Western going on for that lower area median income, and right now, we don't have a focus on that workforce housing kind of. So those were the two biggest, I think, commitments that were made that were slightly different than the previous alliance. And the structure is basically the same, Kevin, except that we now have two representatives from each municipality serving on the Board?
Correct. Right. Currently, I guess, when this becomes approved, it's a nine-member Board. Currently, we have a four-member Board, which is essentially one representative from each. The way the new function would be, it would be two from each entity, and then one at large chosen by the actual Board. It's essentially a regional housing authority statutory framework. So there's things in here that the alliance will have the authority to pursue, but doesn't necessarily mean that's where they will go. I think the retreat and the strategic plan that was developed earlier in the year really helped frame, kind of take those first steps in some initial projects. There's things that an authority can do that may be things that could happen in the future but may not happen for a while. But it does give you a broader net to cast in terms of opportunities as well as funding strategies and that sort of thing. But functionally, what we'll have here is a reconstitution of a organization that was similar to what was in place in 2016 before the shift occurred. And I would consider it a fully functional regional housing authority per statutory allowances.
I think it also gives us some, I'm not going to get the words right, but economies of scale may not be the right comment, but the fact that we have a county that's working housing in each different area, bringing developers in to do that housing, it makes it easier to get a max, a larger number of units for them to work on to help distribute the costs and also to make them interested in being here. So that's another benefit of the alliance. Any other questions, Melissa?
So the recommendation is essentially, the recommendation of City Manager, that the City Council by motion approve the attached sixth amended and restated intergovernmental agreement, essentially reestablishing the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County.
May we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move to approve the attached, the sixth amend and restated intergovernmental agreement, regenerating the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County. Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Any other discussion? I just want to say that yesterday, first of all, thank you, Kevin, but yesterday, Aaron Hyder, Jose Madrigal, Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy, and myself met with Deborah, I can't remember her last name, who's the representative for the ACLU out of Denver. They came down to talk with us. They were also at the FLC Student Housing Meeting last time. And when she asked us, what were the top three things that we needed in Durango that we saw as challenges, I, of course, said housing, housing, housing. So it's really important, and everybody recognizes that. So I'm very excited about this. Any other discussion?
No, it's great.
May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. All right, now we're on to public hearings. So 11.1, and we're, wow, we're right on time. Legislative and policy-related.
There's a city update, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. It's only two words. I don't see it down there. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. We have just a quick city update, Mayor and Council. First of all, November 12 was shred day for the city of Durango. We definitely had a bit of a backlog due to COVID and ended up shredding 5,500 pounds of documents that will be baled and recycled. The library is hosting the Southern Ute Tribal Dancers tomorrow from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM for a celebratory event to honor Native American Heritage Month. Third-grade students from Park Elementary School took Durango City Council seats last week as part of their local government unit. Students acted as mayor and city council members and learned how city councilors make budgeting decisions. I believe PD was the big winner in each one of those. Then finally, the city officially announced the 10-day closing of Durango-La Plata County Airport during September 7 through 16 of 2022. That will close the airport to all commercial airline traffic while we do runway rehabilitation. And then finally, I do want, if I could ask our Public Works Director, Allison Baker, to come up and just give a quick informational update on Rim Drive. I believe there's been a lot of questions that have been coming in emails, and we figured a good way just to kind of be able to inform the public and the council all at once was to have her make a brief presentation on what the issues are and what staff is doing to mitigate those issues.
Wonderful.
Thanks. I'm Allison Baker, Public Works Director, and good evening, Mayor and Councilors and City Manager. We've, this is sort of late-breaking news, so it was not in our agenda, but if I could share these, this was some information that came from streets through engineering in terms of finalizing the striping that was intended to be on Rim Drive. Excuse me, I'm getting all my, I'm learning all my streets. Rim Drive coming into North College, where they had done paving work as part of the CIP projects this year. So the final step was to go in and do striping. As an enhanced safety process, we're looking at moving the bike lane to the north side of Rim Drive, which is the, you'll see the green at the top of this diagram, and it will provide access for will provide access for biking. The red area will become no parking, and we would continue to have parking on the south side of Rim Drive. At the risk of reading what you can read already, I will run through real quickly. This was sent out to the neighbors and area residents just so they would know what was going on. City of Durango, as part of the 2019 half sales, half-cent sales tax, has repaved a portion of Rim Drive from just west of the intersection with Villa Viento, Tierra Vista Drive, east to the intersection with Guglen Gulch Road. The paving is complete, and the city is finalizing striping plans to complete the project. In response to public safety concerns related to speeding, near misses with bikers on Rim Drive, inconsistency with adjacent development to the west, the city is making changes to the previous striping plan, which neighboring properties may be accustomed to. These are the subdivisions of Tierra Vista Village and the Villas. The changes include removal of parking on the north side of Rim Drive to be replaced with a bike lane, removal of parking on the south side of Rim Drive to the west of Villa Viento, sharrows on the eastbound lane of Rim Drive, narrowed travel lanes that'll go from 12 to 10 foot in a traffic calming effort. Parking will remain on the south side of Rim Drive, east of Villa Viento. There is more information available if you wish to talk to Mike, or we've gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of phone calls, a few emails, and I believe some of the councilors have been contacted. So I did want to let you know that digging back into on-base, the most recent striping plan that we have associated with this area goes back to 2005, and it actually does show bike lanes on both sides of the road. And this is the most recent document that went through the public development process and was approved. So we're actually not, we're looking for a moderate compromise that still allows some on-street parking, not going fully back to the absolutely restrictive, no-way kind of thing. But unfortunately, we have a situation where, due to common use, there are a lot of residents that have gotten in the habit of using a different pattern, and I think we've stirred the pot a little bit, and I wanted people to understand where this was coming from, why we were doing it, and that it's not just a random attempt to annoy. Can I answer any questions? Or I do have more maps, if that would be helpful, in our presentation folder, if that would be more useful than what was on the postcard. But if it seems pretty clear, then I will just leave you to your next step.
I think parking is always a challenge in a lot of neighborhoods, and change is very difficult.
It is.
Yeah. But I think this is, it's a good plan and a good compromise.
Thank you. We'll continue forward and keep you posted on any breaking news. Thank you.
And Allison, I appreciate the customer service.
Absolutely. We want to stay in touch with the folks that we're working with. Thank you.
That concludes the city update.
Boy, I think we're gonna have to do that in purple or something, so I see it. Okay, on to public hearings. 11.1.1 Legislative and Policy-Related Hearings. The city council previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearing for each hearing listed below. The following proposed ordinances or topics have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues dealt with in this section of the agenda are of a legislative or policy nature. So 11.1.1, a continued public hearing to consider the 2022 proposed budget and highway users' tax funds. Who do we have leading this?
We will have Devin Schmidt, our Budget and Strategic Planning Manager, to present this item.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Planning Manager for the city of Durango. I did want to start us off with a video that was prepared by our media and community engagement team that goes over the budget, and then I will just walk through that presentation. So give me one second while I pull this up and share my screen. And I'll try not to break the computer this evening.
The 2022 Durango City Budget process is underway. Here is how it looks. The 2022 budget's focus is on reinstating services to pre-pandemic levels and is guided by the strategic plan. Enhanced livability and sense of place, diversity, equity, and inclusion, environmental and social sustainability, financial excellence and transparency, affordability and economic opportunity, and effective infrastructure network. Durango's strong tourism economy, coupled with conservative budgeting in 2021, mitigated the financial impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. The budget was prepared with the assumption that sales tax will increase 22.5% compared to the 2021 budget. The proposed budget includes a 5% cost of living increase for city employees. The budget was prepared using OpenGov, which offers online financial transparency to citizens of Durango and can easily be accessed through durangogov.org/budget. The budget includes a commitment to enhancing our livability and sense of place by adding two police positions and five 911 communication positions. These additions will bring the city of Durango closer to nationally recognized staffing standards. A proposed capital improvement project division has been created to provide accountability and cost reductions. The goal is to ensure capital projects are completed on time and under budget. The city of Durango will continue its efforts to minimize housing difficulties by utilizing American Rescue Act funds for the newly created housing division. Funding was also included to explore the possibility of a library district, which could provide a stable source of revenue for the library to maintain current service levels and possible expansion. The Durango La Plata County Airport will complete many large infrastructure projects in 2022. Included in the budget is a monthly sewer increase, averaging $2.22 to keep up with increased costs. Durango Transit will restore bus service to the Mercy and Three Springs, Highway 160 and Crestview, and Fort Lewis College North routes. The 2022 proposed Durango budget must be approved by December 7. You can view the proposed budget and more by visiting durangogov.org/budget. There you will find links to the proposed budget and financial transparency portal through OpenGov. Thank you for your interest in the 2022 proposed Durango City Budget.
Where's that office building?
I just want to give a special thank you to Shannon in our community and media engagement, or community media and community engagement department for putting together this video, and then all of the directors who've helped with the information to place it in there. Just a really good effort right now to kind of go through to get a video for the residents to be able to take a look at and kind of get an overview of what the budget entails, and look forward to what we can produce for next year. And I'll kick it back to Devin.
Well, thank you very much for that. And so this is the 2022 proposed budget and highway user tax funds presentation. And so I am going to just go ahead and get started here. What we are looking for from council is the request to have a public hearing on the 2022 proposed budget that will be adopted December 7, followed by a first reading of the ordinance this evening. So this particular item aligns with a strategic plan related to financial excellence and The combined 2022 budget summary does include $86,449,632 in operating expenditures and a total of $57,673,148 in capital expenditures. The general fund, as previously mentioned in the video, does provide a 22.5% increase in sales tax. City sales tax is the largest component of the general fund revenues, followed by our county sales tax, and then other assessments. The general fund expenses are the areas of the city government where you have police, human resources, parks and recreation, internal service functions such as financial services, community development, police, and fire services, and that is, makes up 56% of the total city budget. Internal service funds, these are internal in nature, and the internal service funds include general services, equipment replacement and maintenance, risk management, self-insurance. And then we have proposed two new funds in the 2022 budget, which include the technology replacement fund and the building maintenance fund. These are planned funds that are intended to be utilized for future needs for equipment replacement and for building maintenance. The enterprise funds, so this is the area where funds are fee-based, and so we have the water fund, the sewer fund, airport fund, trash and recycle, and transportation services fund. Those are broken in between operating and capital. And as you can see, our airport fund and from our video has quite a few planned capital expenditures in the 2022 proposed budget. Special revenue funds, we have the 2015 sales tax, the 2019, which are two half-cent taxes of each other. We have the road impact fee, the lodgers' tax fund, the conservation trust fund, park development, storm drainage, and then we have three new funds this year in the 2022 proposed budget, which is the Housing Innovation Fund, the Durango Renewal Partnership, and the Grant Fund. The Housing Innovation Fund aligns with a strategic plan for affordable and workforce housing for the city of Durango. The Durango Renewal Partnership includes the Urban Renewal Authority, and the Grant Fund is a new fund this year to pass through governmental-like grants on an operational basis so that we're able to track year-over-year revenues and expenditures. For our capital projects, we have several capital projects in the general fund. We have the 32nd Street Storm Drain Treatment Pond. We have the Storm Drain Master Plan, the Grand View Access Control Plan, library automated return systems, and a security camera replacement in the library. For the 2005 sales tax, these are projects that include natural lands preservation, open space maintenance, Smart 160, Durango Trails, Park Trail and Rec Improvements. For the 2015 multimodal and parks projects, we have recreation facility improvements, the park maintenance shop, Rotary Park restrooms, the community forestry plan, Durango Mesa Park, ART, Santa Rita Park, County Road 210 Trail, Chapman Hill Ski Hill Project. We have the 8th Avenue and College Avenue Road Design, Downtown Access Camino del Rio to ART, the ADA Pedestrian Access, the Traffic Study, the 32nd Street Calming and Connectivity Design, Downtown Pedestrials Improvements, Santa Rita Park Reappropriation, the ART 32nd Street Separate Crossing, which is a reappropriation, and the Animus Trail Rehab Rank Park to Demon Bridge Reappropriation. For the 2019 streets projects, we have street overlays, Seal Coat Surface Preservation, ADA Accessibility Improvements. We have the alley reconstruction and paving, the 50-50 sidewalk program, North College, and County Road 250-251. For water projects, I'm just gonna hit the top ones on this because we have quite a few in water. We have the North College Drive Water Line Replacement. We have the 9th Main Camino Water Line Replacement, Delwood Needham Butte Water Line Replacement, and the reclaimed sledge management project, as well as the 3G tank. For sewer projects, we have the Upper Amida Lift Station, the Delwood Needham Butte Sewer Line Rehab, 2022 Manhole Lining Rehabilitation, Water Information Systems Database, and the North College Sewer Line Rehab. We also have a few projects that we're requesting reappropriation on, the lift station replacement, Santa Rita Park Design, Santa Rita Park Utilities Administration Building of reappropriation. For airports, we have the 321 pavement rehab and lighting signage replacements, the taxiway A, the terminal expansion Phase 1A, terminal expansion design, wastewater system effluent treatment upgrades, and the rehabilitation design, taxiway A reconstruction design, airline GSC parking and area construction, South GA Hangar Taxi Line Pavements Rehab, water system finish storage tank repairs, and then two reappropriations is the terminal automatic door replacement and the snow removal equipment overhead door replacement. State law requires that we do a public hearing for the Highway User Tax Fund. This is a tax that's distributed from the gasoline tax. It must be used for streets and related purposes. The city expects to receive $526,000 in 2022, and the city expects to spend $2.8 million for streets and related purposes in 2022. So for our next steps, we are here on November 16th for the first public hearing on the budget as well as the first reading of the ordinances. The ordinances were prepared into two separate ordinances, one for operating. On December 7th, if council approves the budget, that would be adopted. There'll be two budget appropriations again, operating and capital as well as two resolutions. And also for the public, we will have the updated OpenGov budget at a summary level with the financial narratives in there. And then finally, as the final step, we will submit the budget to DOLA and have the budget finalized in a complete manner. And that concludes the presentation for the public hearing.
Are there any questions or discussions? I have one question. On the combined 2022 budget summary, I think it was your second page?
Sorry, I'm trying to get the mouse to go back, and it's... Sorry, it's not doing anything.
It's the fourth one down on the left-hand side, or second one down, the third one down on the left-hand side. It's not working. I'm just wondering, in the operating section, the 2015 sales tax fund and the 2019 sales tax fund are shown in the operating section on that summary? But on the capital expenditures list, they're shown in the capital expenditures.
Sure. So in preparing the ordinances this year, because we have the interfund transfers, which is a bit different than we've ever prepared the ordinances, what we prepared was at a fund level, since the 15 and the 19 have the capital projects in them. It was all included on the capital projects, or the capital ordinance.
Bet on your budget summary, they don't show up in capital section.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
Here, let me show you what I'm looking at.
So they're showing up here?
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just, they're showing up here, not consistent. So they're showing...
They're showing in the operating section? Here. But they're showing in the capital section here.
Sure, sure.
So if this were consistent, these would be down here.
Sure. And that is a, that is a good point, and a part of it has to do with the 2019 and 2015 also being special revenue plans. This was something that Cynthia and our finance group had... This was something that Cynthia and our finance group had discussed. Because they're special revenues, we have them listed. It's almost it's not in two places because we did only include them in the operating.
Right.
But it is something that we could consider moving them either down in the capital section or leaving them as a special revenue. And Cynthia, I don't know if you want to talk anymore about that or if I covered it, but it is a bit of a difference between that being a special revenue with primarily having those capital funds in there. So.
Just at a first glance, it appeared that it was out of balance because of that.
Sure, sure.
I'm just concerned about when the public looks at it, they'll say, well, your reports don't balance. So I recognize that they do, but it's but they're still in their different numbers because they're in different positions. And I don't, I'm not saying it needs to change. I'm just saying it could create some confusion.
Absolutely. We could make that quite a bit clearer as well. So.
And I think, Mayor, that we actually talked about possibly having a study session where we actually talk about the design of the budget and the issues and the combining of those things. So that might be a time then to look at it.
If she has a question, I don't know. So are there any other questions or discussion items? Do we need a motion for this?
Actually, I need to open a hearing.
The public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I think I remember this. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up on the paperwork here. Is there anybody here in the building that wants to speak for the public hearing? No. Do we have any virtual people interested in speaking for the public hearing?
Nobody has their hand raised in Zoom.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So do we need a do we need a motion?
This is just a hearing.
Yeah, so this is just the hearing.
There will be ordinances later in the agenda.
Okay, so we don't we're we're done. Okay, just want to make sure. This is the budget. It's really important. I don't want to miss a skip a process here. Okay, so then, thank you. Thank you very much, Devin.
Yes, thank you.
11.1.1, a public hearing to consider the 2022 annual appropriation ordinances.
Your appropriation ordinances.
If I may, Council and Mayor, you're from virtual world, at least from my my perspective, you you sound very, we don't hear you very well. So if you could speak more into the microphone, perhaps it might help.
Okay, can you hear me better now? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hello again, Mayor and Council. So what we're doing is looking to do the first reading of the ordinances. And Dirk, do you have those?
I do, but this is again, before we do an ordinance, we typically have a hearing on those ordinances. So there will be two ordinances on the agenda later. Again, as Devin said, one for capital and one for operating. So the hearings are scheduled to consider the ordinances. So we just need to open up. And the ordinances are in the packet, in the council packet. So I don't unless, you know, again, Devin can quickly go over the concept of those ordinances and how they're structured because you'll be asked to do first reading on both of those ordinances shortly. So I know Devin's looking at me like she's a little confused, but I think this is an opportunity to give a very brief overview about how those ordinances were structured. Again, these are for appropriation. So the budget itself will be adopted on December 7th by resolution. There will also be the adoption of the mill levy on December 7th by a resolution. These are ordinances for the actual appropriation of funds. Because ordinances require two reading, we're we're doing those tonight, first reading, and then there'll be second reading, final reading on the seventh on these. So again, just structurally, the ordinances appropriate funds and finances attached exhibits to both of those that outline the proposed appropriations.
So essentially, what we're doing is opening a public hearing to hear if there's any public comment on this before we.
First reading, yes.
Okay. So I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on the annual appropriation ordinance? Are there any virtual commenters on it?
No virtual comments.
Thank you very much. Then we'll move on to 11.2 quasi judicial hearings. 11.2.1, a public hearing to consider the Yonkers preliminary minor subdivision. Hello, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor. Get my thing open.
It was, it wasn't clear on here.
Share this. Thank you, Mayor. Mark Williams, Community Development Department. This is a subdivision for the Yonker property, which is located at the intersection of West Second Avenue and 26th Street. What they propose to do is subdivide one of the lots that's currently there and then adjust the boundary between the two lots that are currently there. That way they can create three lots on which they would build single family homes. So you can see the property highlighted in green. This is next to a fairly busy commercial part of Durango on Main Avenue. Here's Griegego's, the Purgatory Office and Urgent Care just to the south. In this zone, which is EN 2, the minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. That's why the boundary is being adjusted between two of the lots. And I'll show you that on the next slide. And then each of the three lots would have the required amount of square footage and lot frontage. And then access for the two eastern lots, I'll go ahead and change it, would be from a shared driveway along 26th Street, which the city feels is a better situation when you can share driveways because there are less turning conflicts. So especially if you're on an alley and a a street like this, if you can share that driveway, there's less potential for danger. And then the access to the other lot would be off an existing curb cut on West Second Avenue. And a lot of the houses on West Second already have curb cuts on the street. So it's it fits in with the existing context. Probably the most, the thing that stands out most about this project was the presence of three large cottonwood trees on the westernmost side of the property. So that would have been here. And it's actually on the Yonkers property, not in city right of way, these three trees. And so we had a couple of contacts from the public from people who were concerned about those trees. So the city and the Yonkers and the city arborist also, we worked together and came up with several conditions of approval that we put in the staff report and were approved by the planning commission. That includes putting protective fencing around the bases of the trees to protect as much of the root zone as possible during construction. And then also, when we get the final plat, we will put a building envelope on the final plat that has strikes a balance between having enough space to build a house and getting the the footprint of the building as far away from the trees as practical. And then also, we'll have the trees inspected by a certified arborist before any construction begins. And so that's we want to make sure that there are no dead branches that are up in these trees. They're they're pretty big, so a dead branch up there could cause some damage if it fell. And I do have to say that the Yonkers have done a good job over the years of maintaining these trees. They already hire an arborist to to inspect them. And so that really won't be anything different from what's already been happening. We would like to have them conduct annual inspections of the trees. And then one more thing is the Mr. Yonkers, Nick Yonkers is a builder by trade. And he proposes to have a peered foundation system for the house. So instead of a continuous wall, which would sever any roots that were up to that point, the piers would be less impactful to the roots and they could potentially even come out of the other side of the house on the corner. This is an image of the trees that I'm talking about. So on the left is an aerial. And you can, this is three trees, by the way, you can see it's it's got quite a big canopy. And then on the the right is from street level. And the third house would be or the new house would be located on this lot. And so their plan is for, if I go back up here, they live in the existing house, which would be on Lot 2. And there's some outbuildings. They would build the house on Lot 1. And then they would move into that house. And then they demolish the existing structures and build two more houses. And so since they're small lots, the houses would be also relatively small. And while small doesn't mean affordable anymore in Durango, it does mean more affordable. When we get the final plat, as I said, we'll have the building envelope and then also some shared driveway language. This does meet the affordable housing or of housing goals from the strategic plan. It does comply with the LUDC's subdivision standards, as you can see on this slide. As I mentioned earlier, we had two public comments. One was from an arborist, Tom Esqu, who just had some general comments, which we tried to incorporate those as best we could. And then from Kathleen Zilich, who was worried about the health of the trees. And I think after Ms. Yonkers and I both emailed with her, she seemed to be satisfied with the conditions that we approved to protect the trees. So the recommended motion is to approve the Yonker minor subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made.
Thank you, Mark. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments on this agenda topic? Any virtual comments? Do the Yonkers have a presentation?
I don't know if they have a presentation. She said that she would be here virtually.
Does she want to?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I've been monitoring and watching. And I can't add anything in addition to what Mark has presented. I think we have everything lined out that needs addressed. And as items come up, we'll certainly deal with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other virtual comments?
There's no other comments.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from council or staff? Maybe we could get Melissa's picture up there so we can see if she's raising her hand. There we go. Thank you. Did you have any questions, Melissa?
No questions.
Okay.
Just a thank you to the developers here and working with staff and coming up with creative solutions and protecting the trees. Thank you.
All right. May we have a vote, please? Or may we have a motion, please?
Can you put the?
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, you're so good.
Okay, I move to approve the Yonker preliminary minor subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please, Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes, thank you, Mark.
And now we're on to 11.2.2, a public hearing to consider the Twin Buttes Parcel F Preliminary Minor Subdivision.
Okay, thank you. This is, as you said, Twin Buttes Parcel F Preliminary Minor Subdivision. The applicant's proposed to create five lots out of one lot that's there. That's there right now. Four of the lots would be for single family homes. And then the leftover lot would remain undeveloped for the time being. This is a preliminary plan review. It requires public hearings at Planning Commission and City Council. And then if this is approved, the applicant would go back and make any minor revisions to the final plat. Here's a map of Parcel F. This is Highway 160. And the main entrance into Twin Buttes is just a little bit south off of this map. Here's the main park and gathering area. And the most of the lots would be along Twin Buttes Avenue, which is on the north side of the property, with one on Larkspur, which is on the south side of the property. The overall size is two and a half acres. Each of the new single family lots would be over 7,500 square feet. And they would have adequate access in terms of lot frontage and utilities to everything that they need. The tricky part about this subdivision is Lot F1. Go ahead and scroll down to the subdivision plat. Lot F1 has a lot of topography. There's a gully that goes through here on the west side. And then on the east side of the property, there's a knoll that overlooks the lots that are farther east. So Werner Hyber was here earlier. He was the one person that we got a comment from. And he had concerns about what would happen to the this elevated area back here. So Twin Buttes worked with Werner. And what they came up with was this hatched area will be dedicated as open space. So it won't ever be developed on. And then the rear 20 feet of these lots will have a no build setback. So no garages or sheds or anything because the slope of the the knoll is is on the part of it is on the 20 back feet of these lots. Because the high point is right outside the property lines. And so Werner was okay with that. He came to the planning commission meeting, said he was happy that that had been worked out. And so we have now what you see, which is four lots. And then if Parcel F1 ever gets developed, if it's anything other than a single family home or a duplex, it would have to come back for more public hearings. This is also in conformance with the strategic plan housing goals and also with the LUDC's subdivision criteria. As I mentioned, Werner Hyber had a public comment, but spoke in support of the project at the planning commission meeting. So the recommended motion is to approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1, filing 1B Parcel F Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to say? Are they here virtually? Nope, apparently not.
Who's Dan?
There's Dan. Okay. Dan or?
There I am. Okay, there I am. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. This is Mark. I think it was a great presentation. Dan Burkhart here, by the way, 17 Lizard Head Drive. Nothing really to add. Again, it was good working with Mark again on this project. We agree with the conditions of approval. And I will gladly attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any other virtual commenters for this agenda item?
No, Dan was the only one with his hand raised.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. And then, Counselors, do you have any questions for either Mr. Burkhart or staff? Melissa or Counselor Youssef? I'm sorry. Nope. All right, then may we have a motion, please?
I will recommend that we approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1, filing 1B Parcel F Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto 12, an introduction of ordinances. 12.1, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies and the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for operating expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado for the 2022 budget year.
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance O 2021-25. And this was a subject of the hearing just a few moments ago, where the outline of the proposed appropriation for expenditures in the 2022 budget year were outlined. So the ordinance does have an attachment to it that contains the proposed appropriations. Again, this is first reading. Second reading will occur on December 7th along with all of the other budget. along with all of the other budget adoption actions at that point.
Wonderful. And I just want to point out that this is the operating expenditures ordinance.
Right.
Is there any questions or discussions? Do we need a motion? We do need a motion.
Yes, we do need...
And that's...
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-25.
Okay. May we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance O-2021-25.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you.
And now we're on to 12.2, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies, and the amounts and for the purposes set forth below for capital expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the 2022 budget year.
Yes, and this will be for capital expenditures as opposed to the prior one, which was operating. And this is ordinance O 2021-26.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
If I may, Mayor, if I could, just wanted to thank Devin and Christina and Cynthia for this budget process. I know this isn't quite done yet. We still have one more meeting, but just wanted to appreciate you for everything that you all have done and the work that you've done this year, specifically with having a baby during the process, as well as a lot of the other financial information that you all have been working on. And just wanted to tell the team, thank you very much and really appreciate your work. And please pass that on to the finance staff as well. And if they're listening, want to tell them each individually, thank you, definitely a team effort. So thank you all very much.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance O-2021-26.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think council wants to say thank you, too.
Yes.
Yeah. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Now we're on to item 13, council reports and actions. Each councillor is provided an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and to discuss topics not otherwise appearing on the agenda. Councilors, do you have any meetings or reports that you'd like to talk about?
Getting my notes out, just a second. I don't have any. I had like three last time, but I wanted to remind you, because I think before our next council meeting, we have, hang on. I'm going to, I was gonna wait, but then you were looking at me. Which is fine, there's nothing to do. I can kind of mumble until I find the email, so I don't mess it up. Not mess it up. Maybe I can't. Okay, maybe come back to me, and then I'll find it, and then...
Awesome. Councilor Yusef? Do you have anything you...
Hi. I was not able to attend, unfortunately, a meeting this morning due to my obligations here, but I did ask them for an update, and I unfortunately did not receive that in time for this meeting, so I don't, I don't have that. I did attend the CML Housing Subcommittee meeting. It was really interesting meeting. We kind of spent a lot of time talking about what the other, what various communities are doing. And councillor Nosworthy, you sent out an email from CAST about various initiatives of the past at the last elections, and we spent a significant amount of time going through some of the efforts that other communities did take on to pass housing initiatives to bring sustainable housing funding to their communities. And there was a significant amount of them. And I, I think I will share my list as well with council instead of kind of going through those there, except for just to say that, you know, there were some communities close to us, too, that passed these initiatives, including URAE, Leadville, and Telluride passed two different housing initiatives as well. As well, and I also find it interesting that Pagosa Springs, they're going to be looking at voting, putting a ballot measure on their April ballot for a short-term tax on rentals. So it's just interesting to see what other communities are doing, so I kind of wanted to just touch on that. And that, that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Okay, I found it. Okay, councillor. Wanted to remind everyone, I said it in the last meeting, but the Durango Creative District is hosting Community Conversations, and this one is around Indigenous mascots event to bring awareness on harmful stereotypes and cultural appropriation. It is on December 2nd, and doors open at 5:00 PM. It's a free event. It'll be a panel discussion at the Durango Arts Center. And complimentary refreshments are served, courtesy of Res Girls Catering. It's also going to be recorded and streamed online for at-home listeners, so if you don't feel comfortable attending in person, there'll be an option for that. So there's five local panelists that'll be attending, and so I think it'll be a great event.
When I was driving into town the other day, I drove past where the old Ark of History used to be. Has the Creative Economy Commission thought about what might go there, replace that?
I feel like that there we have a few, Nicole, we're focusing on getting the one in at first, I think. And then, yes, okay, great. Am I misspeaking? So the panels that need to go in, I think that's our first priority, because that's right along there as well. And then I think that's on the agenda as a goal for the 2022.
Perfect, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
And while you were looking for your materials, I was too, and came up with the same one.
Okay, good, I know, I was like, weird, I didn't want to, I didn't know.
No, no, the Community Relations Commission is also active in helping with the December 2nd event. And then this Friday, so I also appreciate you making a plug for it, and I'll just add on to it. This Friday is, there'll be the Transgender Day of Remembrance up at Fort Lewis College from 6:30 to 8:00 or so. And that's actually a national day that recognizes transgender and gender-neutral people who have been murdered or through violence, particularly during the past year. So that is a day of remembrance. And I went to it a couple of years ago, and it's extremely moving, and I'll be going again this Friday. And I'll be, we actually received an official request that the city speak, and so as Mayor Pro Tim, I'll be representing the city at that event. So, thank you. And those, oh, I have one more report. I just wanted to say on the funding that the Community Relations Commission has a small amount in their budget, and they worked on a couple of things, the Dia de los Muertos film, which was last, earlier this month, in, at FLC. They're working with funding also for this event on December 2nd, the community conversations around Indigenous mascots. They're looking, also supporting some of the funding costs for this transgender day of remembrance. And then there's some other things that are still in the works. So again, that's just some of the work that the Community Relations is doing with its modest budget.
Excellent. Thank you. So I had the La Plata Economic Alliance Board meeting, and Emily Meisner, who was the interim executive director and then was the assistant to Michael, has taken a position with the Pagosa Springs Economic Development Group. So she is just kind of finishing out a halftime kind of thing over the next week or so, and there's a replacement. I have not met them yet, so I will report on that when I meet them. And then the investor meeting for the La Plata Economic Alliance, one of the very interesting presentations was by LPEA, and they spoke about the MOU that they have with Tri-State. So the MOU was working on the idea that they would be able to buy 50% of their energy from Tri-State and 50% of the energy from other sources, in particular Crossover, who's a sustainable energy group that they've contracted with. This has the potential to reduce the cost of Tri-State's energy acquisition costs by $7 million a year, which would get passed on to the community that they serve in some way, shape, or form. And it also, of course, creates a better, better carbon footprint for the sustainability. That helps the city attain our goals also. So that was pretty exciting. The Regional Housing Alliance, we already spoke about. All the two things that we talked about were the IGA and RFQ, so that was, that's great, we're moving along. The Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board welcomed our new members. We had two new members, and it was really exciting because council interviewed the applicants last week, two weeks ago for that. And we had 11 applicants for two positions. That's outstanding. It's very exciting. So we also had some loose horses and horse gulch, hence the name, I'm sure. I was riding my bike, and that was pretty entertaining. The rangers that the Parks and Rec Department has that goes up and takes care of our natural lands, like removing the homeless campments, cleaning things up, put up some new signs. They look awesome. I'm really excited about it. They'll continue doing that. The homeless camp cleanup that they did was outstanding. So there was a big round of applause for the work that they do on our open space. So then, I was busy in the last week or so. Then I also attended a La Posta group conversation. So staff and county representatives and city representatives are speaking with some landowners down on La Posta about public investment for helping them develop commercial and residential. So what is, what does the infrastructure investment need to look like? Where does it go? How does that happen? The annexation process, the timeline and the zoning, whether or not we'll be able to do a URA down there. Also site-specific development, so what goes where? And it's, it's great to hear, because it's our community members and property owners coming forward to the city saying, "We want to help with the housing problem. We want to help with the high cost of commercial land." So that's pretty exciting. Did I do, did I say enough there, Kevin? Or is there more I can add? All right, thank you. And then the last thing was that last, last night, I went to Fort Lewis College and attended the student housing conversation, and it was Commissioner Salca and Commissioner Porter Norton and President Tom Striticus and myself, who sat up at the main table. And then there were roundtable discussions with all of the students who were interested in it, as well as community leaders, like Jen Lopez, who were there, people involved in housing. And it was very, very interesting to hear from the students, the challenges that they have for housing, and their suggestions for how we might address those. So it will be an ongoing conversation. So I'll bring back more information as time goes by. Anything else? Nope? All ready. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.